So Mitch, we're live. Yep. The Orno Town Council has ended its executive sessions and we're back in live meeting. And for those attending or watching at home, we have attending Councilor Marks, Councilor Powers, Councilor Bertholz. Our virtual this afternoon, Councilor Kenny and Councilor Demerit are here in person. Councilor Baker and Councilor Larway are not with us this afternoon. The first item on our agenda is agenda review. And this is a point prior to the consent agenda where any member of the council or a citizen can ask to have something pulled from our consent agenda before we move forward with consent agenda. Or a council could add something to our agenda. Is there anything on our agenda review? All right, we'll move forward with consent agenda. Could we get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Yeah, I heard a move by Councilor Kenny and a second by Councilor Bertholz. But you're tracking this for us or is?
We got Amanda.
Oh, Amanda, thank you. We have to have a roll call vote because we're doing this hybrid meeting. Councilor Marks.
In favor.
Councilor Powers.
In favor.
Councilor Bertholz.
In favor.
Councilor Kenny.
In favor.
And Councilor Demerit's in favor. That's a unanimous vote, five to nothing on the five to zero on the consent agenda. On your new business, I'll call order. I'll take a motion to put order two, four, one, five, nine, order confirming the town manager appointment and contract on the floor. Council Kenny? We gotta move it. Okay, move by Council Kenny, is it seconded by? Seconded by Councilor Powers. I'll entertain a motion. entertain a motion to fill in the blank on this order with the name Mitch Stone.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and the title is gonna be?
Assistant Town Manager of Economic Development.
Assistant Town Manager.
Slash Economic Development.
And Economic Development Director.
Yep.
All right, is there any discussion from the audience? Any questions?
No, other than the audience, sorry.
Yep, any discussion from council?
Really appreciate the, the, the move and appreciate Mitch coming on board for this. I think it's really, it's a perfect fit and happy to, happy to support it.
Okay, I would echo that and thank Mitch very much for his work and support, particularly during the transition for the council. A lot of, lot of work that went into this over the past several months. And I think it's a good move for the town, excited about it. So with that, any other comments? So we're voting on, gonna take a roll call vote on order twenty, two, one, five, nine, confirming the town manager appointment and contract of Mitch Stone to be the Assistant Town Manager and Director of Economic Development. Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
Very in favor.
Very in favor. Councilor Bertholz?
Favor.
Okay, Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Demerit's in favor. That's a five to zero vote. Congratulations Mitch and thank you. Take a motion to put order twenty, four, one, sixty, order confirming the town manager appointment and contract of?
No move.
Move by Council Kenny, seconded by Councilor.
Second.
Powers. Okay, and I would entertain a, a motion to include Zach Turner as Finance Director. Zach Turner as Finance. Moved by Council Mark. Seconded by Council Powers. Any discussion? And we'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Bertholz? Loser.
Favor.
Oh, nice. Councilor Bertholz is in favor. Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Demerit's very much in favor. All right, that passes five to nothing. I would take a motion, entertain a motion to table order twenty, four, one, sixty-one, order authorizing the town council chair and town manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with AFs, AFs me, Council ninety-three.
So move.
Don't move. Second.
And seconded by Council Powers to table. All those, is there any discussion? Okay, Councilor Marks?
In favor.
In favor of tabling. Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Bertholz?
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Council Demerit is in favor. Waiting for myself there. So that passes five to nothing to table order twenty, four, one, sixty-one. That closes the special town council agenda. And we'll move into the council committee agenda. That way to go?
Yep, that's the way we'll do it.
And it's a finance and operations committee matter. We're gonna get a briefing from Chief Merrill on the Orno stops initiative.
Not at all.
From Craig here?
Please.
Welcome to my Chief Dan Merrill, the Orno Police Department. Thanks for joining us.
No problem. So, I came here tonight. We sent out in my background material, yeah, Dan Merrill, Chief of Police, a draft of what Pete and I, so I'm kinda not speaking for Pete, but I'm just talking about what him and I have worked on. He's always on vacation this week. So him and I have had some meetings. And we just wanted to show you guys kind of the direction of where we're going with this Orno stops campaign and give you guys a little bit of background material about how I think it can be rolled out. The point of meeting tonight ahead of the town council meeting, formal one, is if we can get some feedback or if there's some thoughts on the logo or some of the background material that I have, now would be a good time to get it or now up until, you know, maybe a few days before the agenda has to get posted in case I have to make some changes. I, I'm gonna have to put together a little bit of a presentation for the actual council meeting. So a day or so is noticed would be helpful to me so I don't have to cram it all in midnight some night. But essentially, the framework's gonna be, we're gonna roll it out to the timeline that was at the bottom and start there and work in reverse order. Obviously, we're talking about it tonight. We're looking to solicit some feedback from council. Like I said, do you want the feedback to go to you, Clint? If there's feedback on it or how would you like it to go?
Yeah, I think, yeah, feedback should come to me. And then we'll work it as a team.
Yep. Okay, so we'll send feedback to the town manager and then him and I can coordinate on where we're gonna go from there. We'll do a little brief presentation on what it's gonna look like at the council meeting on the twelfth. And then we'll look to implement this on August twenty-sixth, which would be the week of the Orno schools will be getting back into session. The University of Maine will be doing Hello Maine that weekend. And then we'll look to continually do this. It'll be something that we kind of build into the fabric of what we're doing for all of FY twenty-five. And with that, some of the funding that was allocated through counseling to my budget, that five thousand dollars that was allocated in my budget, I will use some of that, but some of this we just wanna make part of our normal everyday operating procedures. So what that means is that overall, we want Orno stops to be meant as an educational initiative that will be focused throughout town, the whole town, on school bus safety. So for stopping for school buses, pedestrians and crosswalks, biking safety, speeding, distracted driving's a big one. And any other type of things that could affect the way that cars and pedestrians and all of the town interfaces together. I think it goes without saying that, you know, when the schools come back, when all the schools come back, that the population in town, traffic in town, it changes, right? You go outside and you walk today or any other day up until the Orno schools get back in session and UMO comes back, you have a different feel about town. There's less traffic, there's less biking, there's less people out on the bird scooters and stuff that we have. But once all those schools come back in, you really wanna put a push out there and let people know that we're trying to all cohabitate nicely in town. So the logo that Pete's kinda roughed out, that him and I talked about, is right there in the top of the agenda. I'd like to do some subtle things. So the red and blue obviously be some of our police colors, the roads, you know, the tire that's in there. So some subtle messaging to people. Like I said, this is a rough draft. We're open to feedback. When Pete and I were meeting, when we meet with Clint, this is kinda what we've come up with. So I think that's the high points of it. Are there any questions from any of the councilors?
I'll just add before they turn over questions that I wanna thank Chief and Pete for doing great work. There's a lot of different pieces to pull together. On the lighter side, the Orno stops was, was a long conversation. And every time we came back to a different idea, we kept talking, well, you know, because Orno stops at crosswalks and Orno stops for, but you know, it just, it's what we want, that is the messaging, that Orno stops or whatever the issue, or we will stop being a distracted driver, or we will stop speeding. I will stop you. Yes, or we'll stop you. So it just kinda just kept coming back and I think we were just overthinking stops. We'd like to work a little bit more. Peter asked for a little bit more time on it as well. But yeah, send, send the feedback through to us on what you're seeing. This is not, and again, the memo nailed it better with the best, but I will repeat it. This is beginning of an initiative that is not starting and stopping. It's year long. This is about community engagement, community policing. So it's using the, the messaging of the town to put out what we're, what our goals are. And then just letting everyone know before your police department shows up. Some communities do it differently where they'll just go out and stop people without notifying that all of a sudden we're gonna be stopping speeders or we're gonna be more strictly enforcing speed limits. And that leads to other issues. This is a way to put it out there in front of them. This is part of our engagement. We can put the posters around town and in different places and on our website, social media.
Sure, we talked about putting it on the, the signboard out front here, like we had the school bus stop. So the signboard, the town social media, our social media. And I, I forgot that there was one line that was in here too that I've, I've met with some of the staff of the University of Maine too to try and help us get the message out too. So they were a hundred percent on board with whenever we locked down, whatever the messages that we wanna put out to people in general, they can put it out to all staff. Staff, students, everybody up on campus. And that way we, we hit the other, you know, large contributor to traffic in town, right? You have professors that are up there, the students that are up there, all that. So we wanna try and get the message out to as many people as we can. And if it generates questions, that's what even Clint said that I think best. Think what kept coming back to stops was we kept saying, well, what is Orno stops? That allows us an opportunity to elaborate on whatever it is. I can say we stopped for anything. This is what we stopped for. So it's kind of a question inducing title, which kind of made it a little enticing to us when we kept talking about it. So that's kind of the theory behind it.
Trying.
Yeah. So.
Anybody have any questions for, I have a couple, but anybody online? Council Powers?
Yeah, I just, I, I like it. I think it's great. Could we have on some of these signs or some of these messages, like a friendly reminder from Orno Town Office and Police Department or something? So people know where it's coming from, but other than that, I love it. I think it's great. Thanks.
Council Bertholz, Council Marks? Council Kenny?
I was just curious if the crosswalks, I think some were painted already this year, but some of them are completely gone already too this year. I don't know if they were painted into or all of them painted, but I am curious if we're going to also make sure that the crosswalks are noticeable. And I think, I don't think all have signs or anything, but I think we're working maybe towards that. But I did happen to notice, I think maybe up on Parks, you're like, oh man, they're gone already. I don't know if they're painted already this year or. Put a rat on that cycle.
We'll check, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get enough paint.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think Leo, that that's a good point because my experience is that the crosswalk painting never lasts a full year or even close. So for multiple reasons, but you know, primarily for the safety of pedestrians and so people know where they're supposed to stop. I do think we may have to take a look at our painting schedule and whether we have to do it twice a year. And that obviously might have monetary consequences, but I think it's not reasonable to expect people to stop when they can't see where they're supposed to be stopping, so.
And I think that that might bring us to see, I know that there's different levels of paint and I know some are very expensive, but if that's, it's cheaper to get a higher level of paint that we only paint once and stays the whole season, maybe it's worth it. But I'll let, let you guys look into that because I know the, that the department will have a better idea of that kinda thing than I do.
So. Okay, for me, thank you for the work on this. For me, this kinda got started back in, in February. We had the public hearing on Route Two corridor and we heard a lot of concerns in that meeting and then the surveys, stuff that followed about safety in town and things that, you know, had been brought up in the past but hadn't been addressed. And then just a few weeks after that, we had a school bus driver and a parent come forward with concerns about school buses being passed, stop buses being passed and the number, you know, and then just the response Chief Merrill that you had to that, I thought was a really good indicator of what, what a town can do when, when there's a clear challenge and intentionally responding in terms of the goodwill you can build when you, you intentionally do something like that and the heightened enforcement that you did. I think of Orno stops as also being inclusive of the work we're doing around infrastructure. So the where the traffic coming on Forest Ave, the route with the work that'll go on Route Two, you know, painting the sidewalks, those kinds of things are important. If we talk about multifaceted, it has to be, I think it has to be education first, you know, carrot, enforcement second, stick, but also inclusive of the infrastructure and the investments we make in that space. And I think we communicate it that way. So not only does it change your, hopefully driver behavior, but it sends a message to the community that we are prioritizing safety in Orno and we're doing it in this kinda really thoughtful and strategic way. I would share, I'm very interested in, in the work that the university do to help support this, both in terms, in terms, particularly in, in terms of education. And I would share, Chief Merrill, maybe with you, with Pete, maybe I'll, an email back to you, Clint. The, the work the university did, I, I was really involved in the work the university did around its vaccination campaign. And the University of Maine achieved a hundred percent in, in-person compliance with its vaccination policies, which was to, you know, to be vaccinated or have it, you know, approved exemption. And the way they did it, it wasn't just, you know, there was, there was a lot of education, a lot of promotion. You know, we had these shot clock, we call them shot clock campaigns where we gave out scholarships to students who've registered their vaccination status ahead of the school year. We had, you know, social media, we had a lot of different ways to promote it. But there was also a stick in, in the backend of it is because if you didn't get vaccinated, you didn't register your vaccination, you were gonna be disenrolled from classes. And, and the third piece of that was you had all this infrastructure. You know, we had all these places to get vaccinated, you had vaccination clinics. So kinda all worked together to create this culture of expectation that the university community was gonna be vaccinated. And I think that's what, what I envision for Orno stops is kind of a similar approach to changing behavior, setting expectations, changing behaviors. That this is, this is a community where we're gonna, we're prioritizing safety and we, we have an expectation that people who drive through Orno share that priority and there are consequences if we don't. So that's, that's how I think about it. And I think I look at this as a launch of a program that will be due year in and year out, making it clear that Orno is committed to the safety of everybody who lives, works and learns here. So that's no question, just a soapbox comment, but I really do appreciate the work that's gone into it. I think it's real leadership. So thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, if you guys find anything, just shoot it our way and please. We are more than willing to do work as, as we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. It's really timely and great to see.
Okay, next up, we're gonna talk briefly about, we talked about the public safety building a lot in the, in the last year. And we were gonna discuss as a, as a council, we have a new staff on, but we have new staff that are still new and working through. We're still in the search for a fire chief and we're gonna update on that later on in the, in the town managers report. But wanted to have a conversation, at least create a, a place set about what, how we restart that process with our new town staff. You know, our new Public Works Facilities Director is with us tonight. And wanted to talk Clint, get a sense from you about where we go from here. Because we did, we put a pin in this and we owe the community and the people that work for us to dive back into this now that we've got our new town manager replaced.
Yeah, so, I mean, and this has been a tough one. There's a lot of projects, a lot of things to look at. And this has been around for quite a while. I have still not completed what I would've wanted to do for my own personal research. There's a few other meetings and conversations. I also wanna get a more formal tour of all of the building. I've been through some, share, not all, but just to kinda take it and relate it back to what's in the reports. We also don't have a fire chief. And again, I think for a decision of this magnitude, a fire chief not being involved from the beginning, this is what I think we need to introduce that whoever fills that role into the community such that they can be a part of this and, and bring the discussions forward and communicate with fire department staff as a whole. There is some sort of need, there are many needs there. We gotta figure out what's gonna work, what's the best way to approach it and what's, the fire department and the town manager will agree is the best process. I need a fire chief to evaluate this as well and share the things that I don't see as a town manager from the fire industry. I started some conversation with the police chief, been very helpful there. I know there's another conversation, but again, talking with the acting deputy chief, again, acting chief and deputy chief as well as others is helpful. But again, it's better to have that fire chief's role so that there's ownership throughout the process for the town, staff and council and me. So that's kinda where we're at. I think it all ties to the date that we hire and have the first date on staff with the fire chief. I think we're bringing this into the interview process, which is a little bit of update later. But I would say probably within two to four weeks of the date of hire, we could have an initial meeting. And what process you wanna incorporate with that, again, is more up to council discussion right now in your committee agenda and see what you're thinking.
Yeah. I, I think I, you know, I think what it, I agree that we gotta have the fire chief in place before we start. And I think the council, we ought to spend some time thinking about what it is we're gonna need to make a decision and how we, you know, I don't wanna, I wanna frame, I like to frame on a process that we can sort of agree to, that's kind of our guidepost and how we do it and not have things come in and, you know, talk about something for a half an hour and nobody really knows. Belinda was there, she knows, but we really didn't make a lot of progress and make a lot of decisions. So I, I think about it in that, in those terms and really having, articulating a process for how we're, how I'm gonna consider it as a, as a council and as a community with our professional staff and what we'd need to make decisions moving forward.
So what, what are the thoughts about having a, a facilities committee? I mean, when, when the school did their major enhancements, they had, they had, I don't know how, they had a probably too big of a committee. But I, I'm definitely, I know one thing I'm not interested in when we get going is getting another study. We have, we have a lot of engineering that's been done on this. There may be questions on some of that that we need to ask about engineering, but I don't think, we have it. I think we need to rely on staff and then we, I think there's, there are probably building people that in the community that might be open. That's kind of what has been done back for the library was built at, at the, at the school. So I kind of wanted to see what, what are people's thoughts on having a kind of a building subcommittee?
Leo, I think that could be a great idea. I, I, it does seem like it's worked well other places. So I would be totally open to that if we have a proposal of how to do that. I know for me, that as we go back to this, I'm really grateful that we're gonna wait for the fire chief. I would certainly want that person on board. Very grateful that we're bringing it back up because we promised the public that we would bring it back up in July. So I'm really loving the accountability of the process right here, that we're having the discussion and talking about what happens next. For me, for me personally, the two things that I know that I want at the start of this process is to better understand, I guess, first from staff and then from council, where this public safety building project falls in the order of priorities of the many capital projects on the fifteen million dollar capital project list that we were given by our past town manager. It has never been clear to me if this is the tippy top project or if there are three other projects that are higher priority than this. And I need to understand that going into the process in order to understand how much tax burden I feel like people can support. So I, I need it to be part of that conversation or at least some of that at the beginning. And the second thing is that, as Leo said, we have a lot of studies already of this building and also of all of our other buildings or most of our other buildings. And I definitely need this conversation to talk not, not about the public safety building in complete siloed isolation, but in the context of, are there any ways to utilize our other buildings to relieve some of the pressure on this public safety building or not? I'm fully aware that there may or may not be, but I really would need that conversation to happen early on. I don't wanna go about designing a building until I know if there's any other ways to address any of the space crunches and, you know, real issues that are in that building right now. That's all I have.
Council Bertholz, Council Powers?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I think it's a good idea to have a comprehensive look at the town buildings. And I don't see a better way of doing that than to have a open committee process where we get input and there's some sort of process of synthesizing all the information.
I think my comment, my comments echo Sarah's, so I'll just say that and keep brief.
Okay. I assume that our Director of Public Works will sort of lead this off. Is that a safe assumption or are we getting to that level of discussion at this point? I mean, that, that's sort of where I think would've been kind of before, although I don't know. So I guess I'm.
It would be, but I think the collaboration can't be, you can't underscore the collaboration of all, all programs and departments that would be impacted playing a role as well. So I think it's, facilities is public works, that's the, the, the focal point where it all will channel back to. But again, I'm saying that that is, leave the role, I think is more of facilitate the role.
Yeah. I do, I do like the idea of the work group kind of model as you start thinking about, you know, your, you know, your chief hired and you start thinking about your, you know, what your recommended thoughts would be for the council, but the idea of a, a work group that's got some, even some citizen involvement in terms, we have some people in this town know quite a bit of stuff about a lot of history in, in public sector and facilities and buildings and things like that. So I think that could be helpful and it helps build awareness for it and start kind of a coalition of understanding about what it is we're up against and what we need to do. So, okay, anyone from the public? Like to be heard on this before we move on? No hands raised? All right. Next up, I guess if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Community Development Committee, we have no items for discussion. Item twelve is nominations evaluations and council policies committee. Council Marks, you'd like to lead this off, please?
Sure. The first item here is really just a report back to council that we did, the working group that was charged with taking a look at the structure and schedule of council meetings was composed of the members of the, I don't know if we're calling it the KIP or D cap or K committee. I don't know, something, it needs a vowel in there. So that was myself, Councilor Baker and Councilor Laraway. And, and for the working group added to that was Clint DeShan and Mitch Stone and Shelley Crosby. We had our first meeting on July twenty-third. Shelley and Rob were not able to attend, so that was Clint, Mitch, myself and Jacob in attendance. We scheduled the next meetings for that committee. There are four on the schedule for August. We might not need all four, but we wanted to give ourselves plenty of time. And we solidified what we understood to be the goals of this working group and purpose. So the goals we listed, I emailed out to council earlier today. Sonia, I don't know if you were able to see that or Matt traveling.
I did not have time to review it sadly, but I will look for it.
That's okay. I can also just read them. There only are five. The first is to move issues and work forward through the council in a timely and efficient fashion. The second is to develop a system that's easier for the public to track and follow. The third was to accomplish less nights of meetings, ideally two nights a month. The fourth was to clarify the roles and functions of committees and of workshops. And the fifth was to clarify how items get on a council agenda, especially as it relates to issues and requests brought, brought forward by members of the public. This is certainly the, okay, this is certainly the chance here for counselors to speak up about, says why we're bringing this back. We don't wanna move forward as a committee unless you feel like we have captured the goals you'd like us to achieve. For a purpose of the working group, we wrote to bring suggestions back to the full council of how to achieve these goals. So our job is just to do the research, speak with each other and come back with suggestions for you all to decide on. But do folks have some amendments or changes or anything to those goals that they would like to see so that we are clear on the task you have set for us?
I, Sarah. Sarah, um, I have, I think this is great work and I, I really like kicking off the work group kind of format in, with this. Uh, under goal number one. And I guess it depends on how broadly you, you define efficient. For me, efficient means, you know, and getting the work completed. So I, I wrote back. A thought of a possible edit to that goal that may not be needed as long as we have the understanding of that efficient means we're gonna finish stuff. Um, but move issues and work forward through the council into completion. Um, in a timely and efficient fashion. But I, I'm not wedded to that, I, but I just think about this work. I think so much of the, one of the challenges we have when it comes to being transparent and communicating to the public. Is that we don't complete things, um, and put an end to it. Um, either with a council action or, you know, a definite agreement to definitely postpone something. So the conversation goes on and on and it just kind of peters out without actually ending. So that's just an observation. It doesn't, you don't need to change the word or goals, but that's something I think about.
Can you?
I think that's a great, I think that's perfectly great, um, addition. I think that's totally in the spirit of what Clint was there also about what the working group was talking about. And I think we should add those words right in. I think as you wrote them, move issues and work forward through council and to completion. In a timely and efficient fashion. Sounds great. Leo, do you have something?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the relationship fr- from that, from that group to council. I mean, that seems like just what council should be doing, I guess, so I'm, what's the relationship? Like, I, I think it, that group is getting its. Getting its marching orders from the full council. And then it's also responsible for making sure council is working or something. I'm not. I didn't re, I didn't get a chance to see that things either, so. Um, I just am going by what you said, move issues more efficiently. Work forward through council.
So Leo, our understanding was that this is what we thought that council has charged us to do, to come back with proposals for how to accomplish these goals. These are what we heard from council. That we wanted a proposal of how to make a structure and schedule of meetings that would help council to move issues and work forward in a more timely and efficient fashion. To be easier for the public to track and follow, to hopefully have less nights of meetings. Staff and council had expressed that that would be something they would appreciate. Um, so this is our writing, what we understood council to be. Asking us to go research and then come back with suggestions to council about how. You could accomplish these goals. A hundred percent Leo, that we make no decisions. All we do is do research and come back with suggestions for council to make decisions on. So, um, it's in your email, Leo, if you want to open up the exact text to look at. Um, this was our attempt to. Represent what we heard council saying they would like us to research and come up with suggestions on. I would say that the last one. Um, I don't think came directly from council about clarifying how items get on a council agenda. This came from staff. Um, at the meeting saying that especially as that relates to requests and issues brought from members of the public. They would like us to think a little bit about how issues get on to the agenda.
And I love that addition. That's something that I remember from before I was on council. I was really confused about and I've heard from members of the public since, so I really appreciate that addition.
Are you able to see the text, Leo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
I do, I think we're making, I think we've made good progress as a council already in terms of how we're doing our agenda, just as. With the, between Amanda and, and Clint and just getting the agenda and plus. Only meeting every other week, there's time, that Fortnite gives us time to get an agenda together. And get it out to the full council a full day ahead of. You know, the deadline for councillors to add agenda items to the, to what we're gonna be talking about. So I think that is hopefully helpful to council and I like the idea, um. Of also thinking through and, and having articulating how members of the, members of the public could petition us. Or, or things like that to get things added.
Okay, so.
And these things all come back to the full council for public discussion. And if it's something that's gonna take an order, it'd be a vote, we'd be on the record for it after having a public discussion. This is a work group that's doing work that'll come forward. Author, work groups authorized by the council. And it'll bring this stuff back to us to have a discussion in a full meeting. This is essentially an update on that first. Meeting of the work.
That is correct. Our goal is just to do some research, bring some ideas back to council and then let council have a public discussion. About whether those suggestions and ideas make sense or they want to go in, or we as a council want to go in a totally different direction. That's not the working group's job. Our job is to do some research, have some discussions between staff and councillors on that. Working group and come back with some ideas for council. Any other question, Leo, or anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Um, the second item on this agenda relates to, um. The, um, document that I had shared with council on the fifteenth. Um. Our last council meeting. Um, and this is, we already addressed, um, on the very first page, I had questions about how the structure of a. Working group would be built or what we would do to get this kneecap committee up and going. Council answered those questions. Um, the next steps for council were to prioritize for the kneecap committee. And what our priority projects are this year. Clearly council has told us the first one is the meeting structures and schedule for council meetings. Um, but on that document that I shared and I believe was linked to the agenda also. Um. It had a list of everything that I've heard over the last fifteen months of kinds of tasks that could potentially. Be assigned to this committee. Um, what I would really like is some clarity from council. If there's something on this list that we're like, no, this should not go to this committee. That'd be great to know, but more than anything, I'd like to know what the next two priorities are. After this council structures and schedules, um, task. Especially because some of these relate to things that council is kind of committed to do fairly soon. So I don't know if all of you are able to see this document also. Um, do you all have that? It's a two-page document. Is that something you all are able to access councillors?
Yes, I have it.
Okay.
Some odd goals, but.
Okay. Great. So on the second page. Um, again, I am not wedded to any of these. This is just things that I've heard council suggest. I will say that in the meetings that, the meeting that Dan and Clint and I had to begin talking about our schedule for the fall as a council, council. Um, it seems to me that items two and three on here have some time pressure. Um, for someone to take them on as a task and bring some kind of proposal. Back to council again for a full consideration and debate. The three sixty degree evaluations, we've committed to do those as part of our new town manager contract, both for our town manager and for the council. Um. We will have, uh, likely, I guess, a new councillor elected in November. So Dan can speak to this, but my understanding from Dan and Clint was that they were hoping that we would. Um, set our goals for the council and for the town manager after that election in November. And perhaps have our first evaluation in January. Uh, but there needs to be some lead time for someone to do the research on. How this three sixty degree evaluation could work. And to bring some ideas back to council. So I would suggest this is a fairly high priority one. Also the policy and procedures manual, because we had done so much work on that and it was very close to possibly complete. It would be lovely when new councillor was elected in November to have a manual, they could actually be handed that said, hey, here you go. Here's the basics that you need to know about how things operate. So to me, those two have some time pressure. Um. Number four, I actually think Clint and Dan are already working on and that might not need to go. To, um. This committee. Um. Five and six, I think would need to be potentially again worked on with staff, either by this committee or just by Clint. I think seven is the other one that seems to me that needs to be addressed by this committee at some point in time. But doesn't feel as urgent to me personally as two and three. Um, and eight again is one where I really think that I'm at all and not at all clear if this should just be. The council chair and town manager quite likely, but it has been brought up a few times, so I put it on the list. Um, so I guess what I'd like to hear from all of you is if you were to say to us, you know, what are the next two things that? You'd like this committee to begin thinking about? How to get working on and hopefully maybe get done by later in the fall. This, um, when we finish the schedule and structures proposals to bring a next proposal back to you. Um, does two and three make sense to the rest of you? Do y'all think I'm nuts? Is there something on here? You definitely don't want to go to the committee? I don't want to take on anything ever in this committee and I don't think we ever should that isn't directly delegated from councils. So I'm asking if you are interested in delegating anything else on here to us to begin thinking about and doing some preliminary work on.
I, I think, I, I think two and eight to me seem, three doesn't seem, uh, as time critical to me. Because even if, I mean, January kind of, Clint started in July, so that's six months in. I don't know, it seems like normally it's a year, so I, it, and that doesn't seem as, um, urgent. I, I do think the policy, I think there's been a ton of work that primarily you have done to be candid on that. And I think it's been, it's good work that's sort of been shelved, so I think that would be good. Um, and I think the, the annual goal setting is, I, those would be my one and twos. One and two.
Yeah, Sarah, I, um. The, so numbers two and three that you highlighted jumped out to me on first pass as. Kind of the, the high priorities we talked about in the past that still seem really good to me. And, um, I noted that you'd, you'd sort of, uh. Highlighted that, um, I do have some professional experience related to. Uh, evaluations and surveys and I would be happy to assist the committee in making a first crack at that if the rest of, um, council would like me to do so. Um, and, uh, to Leo's point, number eight also stood out to me. Um, not, uh, maybe not as like the highest priority thing to task this committee with, but maybe so as. Um, but I was just reflecting that, um. The opportunity to have a retreat with sort of the energy that we have with the new town manager. Um, would feel like a really nice thing to be able to do, so. Um, I agree with, with Leo that that rose up as a, maybe a tertiary high priority for me as well.
Clint, I was curious, um. I, I don't know anything about the three sixty evaluations personally yet, but, um. If you've had any experience with those, is there like, is it? Best to have like a baseline and then do it a year out or is it best to have us work together for a year? And then do it like Leo was suggesting, I don't know, because I, I would agree with Leo if it's something that we need to work with each other. For a little bit, or if it would help guide us to work together this first year, then that would change that, the dynamics.
So my calculus on that being a high priority, if I can jump back in, is that it'll take some lead time to come up with what the process is. That's gonna be the right process for, um, the town of Orono. There are some models that have been used in other contexts, but we're gonna want to tailor something. That really, um, you know, works for the town manager position and for the council and for who we are as a community. And so I'm not proposing that we evaluate Clint in his second, you know, month here. I'm proposing that, um, that that might be good to start sooner rather than later doing the research and the legwork so that. Um, you know, by July of next year, there's a really watertight process that's been vetted by a lot of people and we feel really good about.
Yep. So to, to kind of sequence some of this, I think that. Uh, I think the, I agree with Sonia that the, the takes a while to get it done, the three sixty degree evaluation. And I agree with Leo that it doesn't make sense to, you know. Evaluate Clint, you know, in this first couple of months on the job. But at the same time, you know, the three sixty degree evaluation process that we're talking about is both for the town manager. Which would be a personnel matter, which would be, you know, something just for him and he'd see the results with the council. But also a council three sixty evaluation, uh, that would be sort of our public discussion about the work that we're doing as, as a council. So for me, um, I think the, the meeting structure. Work has to be done first and we were smart, it was savvy of us to kick that off first. Then I think the policy and procedures manual. With the understanding that it's something of a living document that will update as we go along and as we learn. You know, once, um, but if we had something in place that we could agree to come November. Um, when we start the, you know, we're gonna, we're moving, we're transitioning into. Um, our municipal year is gonna, is moving from March to November. So our elections will be in November, our new councillors will join us in November after that election day. Starting in twenty twenty five, so it makes sense to sequence, to structure our work around November being the start of the municipal year. Which is a little confusing because we have a fiscal year that starts in July. Um, and we have a, we have a town manager whose anniversary is in July. So in terms of our evaluation of Clint and the work we'll do, um, to evaluate him annually and, and, um, in terms of. Compensation or anything like that, you know, July seems like the right time of year to, you know, to have that work complete. So I think about it in terms of, you know, getting the meeting structure work done. Then updating the policy and procedures manual to reflect that, where those changes that we're gonna make. Um, have a policy and procedures manual in place for no, hopefully in November. So we could welcome a new councillor if that's in case what we end up doing. And then doing our annual training and goal setting in that space. And perhaps, you know, bringing, because we owe that to Clint as part of his contract as well. If the council, the council will undergo annual training, um, and goal setting with the town manager. Well, I don't know, but with, uh, I don't have the verbiage in front of me, but that's part of. Um, it was very savvy of Clint to negotiate that in his agreement as well, so we'll do, all new councils will get the training. And. And then for me, I think the three sixty degree evaluation, if we start that work in January. Have it in place for late spring, so we have the work done. Um, when we come up on the anniversary of Clint's first year. And that'd be the pattern moving forward, but.
Dan, can I ask a question? Uh, just contract wise and Clint maybe knows the answer to this too. Um, are, we are committed to. Is it, I thought there was something in the contract that specified, um, some kind of check in every six months, not once a year annually. Am I off on that?
We have two, um, we meet with him in executive session twice to check in, twice a year, check in. On, you know, just personnel issues, have a check in conversation. Um, just a personnel review, just so if there's anything going on, he hears from us and. If anything, we have a challenge with, we put it in writing and those kinds of things, so it's very. It's very leans really into communication, so nobody's surprised about anything.
And that was my goal, communication. The more we talk. With a, with that opportunity to be candid with each other is, I think it's good for all. So to have a couple of check-ins a year, one of which would also be culminating to an annual evaluation, so. Um, I think that's just kind of what the expectation was, because. A year flies and a lot happens in a year and it's a lot, it's really easy to look back after a year and evaluate it. But again, if you don't check in on it, it's hard to redirect course if you're not gonna have moments to discuss if it's still on track.
That makes sense. So, go ahead, Dan.
And, and the annual, the goal, the training and the goal setting workshop, I see as something that. You know, all council will have to participate in, so we'll do, you know, it wouldn't be something that would be a committee's work. All of us will have to be here to participate in that conversation, so I think it makes sense. Potentially to do this, you know, to do this in November. But take it off, maybe the committee's list of things to do and have it be something that the town manager and the town chair do. Um, because everyone will be there, not just, not, not just, just the committee, but all seven of us will have to be involved in that.
I guess that was what I was about to say, Dan, just listening to everyone, I think my suggestion would be. Um, it sounds like perhaps this committee would consider our next two tasks to be the policy and procedures manual and. Beginning to do some work on research on three sixty evaluation options and what might fit Orono best. I would like to leverage Sonia's expertise personally while she's here, so. If people are comfortable with us as a committee beginning to take a look at policy and procedures manual and maybe some preliminary three sixty evaluation research. And then delegating number eight back to the town manager and the council chair. That seems very manageable to me for what we can accomplish as a committee this fall coming into November. Do folks all feel good about that?
I do.
Okay.
Punged up in head shakes all the way around. Does that make sense to you, Clint?
Uh, sounds very logical.
Yep.
Okay, and then other things on here, you know, four through seven, we can cycle back around as we're, you know, if we're making great progress on two and three. But for sure, um, if council sees anything else on here, they're like, we don't even want that researched. Do speak up. Um, that would be good to know now too. Thanks. We're not gonna take them on now, but if you see them there and you're like, we don't ever want them done, you know, speak up.
Alright, this was very, um. Thank you, Sarah. Very helpful, very good conversation, so, um. Next up is town council chair and town manager updates, uh, first things first, uh, route two, is it done?
Yeah. Breaking ground tomorrow. Breaking ground tomorrow.
Yeah.
In genuineness, though, that been a great public hearing process, thanks to the state, M D O T, you know, SABEGO technics, council, community, you name it. It's a difficult process to talk about rebuilding a the 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 heart and soul of your transportation system in a town and especially with the new goals. The process isn't nailed down. This is a new process with the state and the biggest one that I saw is questions that I wanted to make sure was updated. Is there's been a lot of questions about the funding structure and that needs to be determined officially, but we haven't seen final confirmations on those funding structure. So as those questions are being compiled and that's coming together, I guess my question to council is, is that we need to put a plan and maybe a draft timeline of what's going on with this. And that can be presented in a way to make better understanding and build the number of steps that have arisen in just this public hearing process. That'll take a little bit of time, but I wanted to see if the staff, if it's really fresh. I had a chance to jump on the public hearing last week right into a council. Timing was perfect. We have this opportunity to talk about it. If that's agreeable, that's kind of where I see the next big step is laying out key milestones. Dates will be kind of tentative, best guess, but to kind of put that in place. Obviously, SABEGO technics getting a final plan on on a concept, on a design construction. But this concept has to go back. They're under a contract to complete that. Having them stop, I don't think changes the process at all in that they've taken a lot of feedback and can get to a draft concept, a final draft concept that still could be the council could elicit more feedback on if you wanted to. And I think that's where I'd like to engage on that timeline to see what your expectations are as we move forward. And I don't think any of that holds up the desire to seek funding because that process is going to be long as well. But if we're committed to a project out there and the funding comes, that's actually a key decision. If we hold up seeking the funding and then we decide we have something we'd like, we may be over delaying the project as a whole for more than a year or two. Because those funding opportunities only come so often. Does that make sense to put that all together in writing so you can see it and the options?
I'm having a hard time understanding what what you're saying to be candid. I'm not. So you're saying continue to pursue the funding without knowing anything?
I would say we would put the funding pursuit on the timeline. I think the next step is a timeline of all the key decisions that would need to be made as we move forward and a rough estimate of when those could be made. Part of that would include how we seek funding. We could even funding option one would be the first window. Funding window two could be the second and we could timeline those all out. And there's been a lot of feedback coming in from this. We also have to coordinate with the state and how they would take this forward if it became congressionally directed spending request. What's the best timeline on that and how they'd like to see that come forward? So again, all those dates are, I think, should be all consolidated and formalized in one summary. It comes back from staff and allows SABEGO to continue on their work because they do, they're under contract to give a concept plan that included public engagement processes. That concept plan does not change the final design. It would influence the final design, but that doesn't mean we have to stop comment if the council is wanting more comment. And again, this is where I'm trying to get a handle of what the process is. The initial was what we're in. It is now at that complete of public input. But I sensed at the end of that public hearing that they wanted more public input. We can work towards having more public input, but we haven't even addressed the things that were brought up in the first last round.
That's my big question is how? I can't remember if I emailed everyone today or not, if it was just in my head, I was thinking about it, but um, did I email about how are we getting this? What are they going to do with us? There was a bunch of great feedback. What are they, what happens with that?
They gave you ideas. Their contract is to give you a concept that takes all the ideas and boils it down to one implementable plan. Doesn't mean you're doing it. It means this is what, with all the feedback they heard, this is the best consensus of a plan that Orano could implement.
That's what they're going to come back with?
Yes, that was what their contract was for with the town.
Clint? Um, I I just have a question on that. So I came out of that public meeting and maybe this is what Leo was getting out a little too. I came out of it really wishing that we would not just get a concept, but that they would actually take all that, all those various, in some cases, very detailed suggestions about, you know, have we considered this or would this be possible? And I would love to see those, you know, summarized, like the answer to this is, this is the road width. And so it's impossible. I don't know, I'm making this up, but right, it's actually not possible to put a bike lane and a sidewalk on either side of the road together, separated from the road with a green space in between because because I think we can have as many meetings as we want, but when the public doesn't feel like the actual questions they raise get answered. I think that's really hard and a few were answered at the meeting, but mostly the purpose of that meeting was just to listen what people's ideas and concerns were. And my hope was that whether that's our consultant company or that's us as a town, that we would, you know, compile a document that said here were various questions and ideas raised and some we may already have answers to and some we may not. Somebody may have raised an idea that we hadn't thought of yet that we need to go out and do a little digging into to see if it's possible. But my hope was that there'd be some actual, not just a plan, but we heard you and we researched that. And here's the actual answer on that about whether it's possible or not.
Yeah, the challenge is, I mean, it's, I think that's, I would love to see that level of responsiveness. And, you know, the challenge becomes like we had, I think Jeff Gordon suggested, let's bury the damn utilities, right? And then the guy from D O T, this guy who loves the skateboard parks said, well, that's not part of our funding. And then we clicked it over Clint and said, well, I'll go find the funding for that. I mean, just kidding.
Yes, yes.
But that's kind of where it was. Yeah. So how do you go about?
Isn't here, I do want to just put in the plug and the reminder that we do as a town have like some, I think it's fifteen thousand dollars add allocated to a hypothetical skate park someday, not all the funding skate park, but that does exist. And some of us, Rob Lerway and I, love the idea.
I know, I know. I was teasing because the gentleman from this D O T said back in February, if he had his way, he'd put skateboard ramps all up and down every highway. So that's, I was kidding about.
His name's Jared. Yes, he's very.
Yeah, you did a good, I I like this style. But anyway, um, the, so how do we get? There's a lot of them are pretty detailed too, and some of them are caught, you know, one per, one side of the room wanted this and the other side of the room wanted that. So it's a challenge. I don't know. Is it a concept?
So the first thing that we have to remember is that there's a contract with SABEGO to do a certain thing.
Scope of work.
Scope of work, okay. And the idea behind that is the first public meeting, they were getting input on what people wanted. So then as the expert, as transportation engineers and have working with the state, they take that information and they look at the corridor to figure out what are, what are to to accomplish this plan, what are the options that could actually happen within this corridor? Keeping in mind all of the pieces of the puzzle that we talked about, which was safety and and multimodal and the least amount of impact on the on the right of way and all those pieces and parts. So then the second kind of public meeting was here's here are pretty much the options that we have based on the information that we've got in the first meeting to say, here are things we could do to accomplish that based on all of these pieces, right? Best practices, what D O T can and can't do, all those things. Then they would take that information and the feedback they got and take that plan and narrow it down with recommendations about what they think would be the best way based on the feedback that they've gotten from the second one. There isn't, um, their current scope doesn't add in, we're going to go back and take all the things there and then run them to ground to see, can we do this? Can we not do this? It's really, we've, we've come up with the the best options based on the information we had in the first meeting to come back to that. Now, you could change the scope, but that's going to add money and time to the project. So that and that's part of the planning, this planning initiative with the state, that's the process they follow.
So one major thing about, I mean, when was that first meeting that you're talking about?
February.
Okay, so that's the first meeting where they gathered information is that, but that's not where the two percent said they cared about.
That that's where they.
I thought that was in two thousand eighteen.
No, so that meeting, they took all the information from that February meeting and put it in that pie chart. But they also had multiple studies before about this various thing and various different, and they they took that information as well.
So my major concern is that two percent, that two percent of that, there was concern with traffic congestion. Tells me that ninety eight percent of the Orano population didn't have a voice in that discussion. Or seventy five percent. I mean, I, everyone cares about safety, bicycle, walking, of course, but but to me, it feels like they, nothing addressed traffic congestion. I I don't think, and I understand why if two, if only there was only a two percenter. So I feel like it was a completely missed mark.
And I think, I I mean, I wasn't here for that for that meeting, but I mean, even as a percentage. I mean, I don't know what our exact numbers are, we can find it, but our percentages aren't high with the second meeting. And again, the question, I guess I've questioned the engagement level. I mean, it's, you've opened up to public processes, you open to full public comment, we can do more. But is it better to do it now? Or is it better to do it after there's a concept is what I'm more looking at on the timeline.
And I I would take, and we didn't like, you know, count noses at the this meeting last week, but I think it was a strong representation of a butters, people who live on Main Street, and that makes sense to me. And you start seeing maps and oh, there's my house and this is what it could mean to my front yard. That that draw, that creates urgency that draws people out. But then, you know, is that representative of Orano at large? And all and a lot of times it's, you know, it's people that show up that get their voices heard. So it's a, I guess the question we had, I was looking at, we had three hundred people respond to our survey about what we were looking for in leadership with our new town manager in that survey that we did. And maybe that's part of a step in the timeline. I felt like that was pretty good engagement for a town, but I'm not necessarily advocating from what I hear. A lot of people say safety in my conversations and but I also, if it's, you know, eight, seven fifty in the morning and I'm driving by the school, I'm thinking congestion, you know, that's, you know, so it's a.
Is it, I guess I'd add before you continue, is this something that we need to workshop then? Because you're definitely getting into a longer conversation.
I think we are. I think we need to workshop it. I think we need to maybe spend some time thinking about what? I I am speaking as one counselor. I haven't, I'm not, I don't think I've got a, I'm not trying to suggest I have a consensus to what other people think. But I think we need to talk, I love the the roadmap for route two. You just talked about Clint when you started this out. I think that makes a ton of sense. I think I think we have to have a conversation about what our priorities, projects are and set some guardrails. You know, what's the, what's the community goals for this project that, you know, we believe we've heard or if we think we have to go out and get more inputs, then we have to go get that. And then how do we get that fee? How do we articulate the feedback we've gotten? I'd like to know. I mean, I think Leo's question, I think Sarah, you asked too. How do we get as part of the scope of the current contract, can we get a report out on what the comments have been? In in like a transcript style or something like that that we go through and read, I think that would be phenomenal. And I also think um, we need to have a conversation about what we do to make sure that the people that are impacted most by the actual construction of this project have, D O T talked a lot about it and it gave me some comfort, but I think we ought to be able to articulate when and where someone who's impacted by a final design has a chance to be heard. And we do everything we can to minimize the impact on people and make sure they get a fair, fair hearing for that process as the individual property owner.
I I want to also throw out there though, I I didn't feel like there's any quantitative data when even when it comes to safety or or traffic congestion. And that's what is the big question mark in my mind. Because if we're going to, we're talking about considering spending thirty million dollars today, you know, it's probably going to be twenty percent higher by the time it gets here. But if we're not to to do what is what I don't understand that, you know, it showed us there were four pedestrian accidents, there were six bike accidents. What does this do when we spend this money? What it, I mean, something quantitative to say, and and it's probably, maybe it's just not possible. But other than that, it's just like anecdotal stories. And I mean, there's definitely some great looking drawings that they've done and some of it looks really nice. Um, I've, I just since then, I've had people coming up talking, just how many trees are we going to lose? And never even entered my mind, but as I drive down Main Street, there's a lot of mature trees that are really are part of the gateway coming into our town. And I I I have a feeling that the answer is going to be, well, we won't know that until we do the engineering study. And at that point, I don't know if it's too late to to say anything different.
My experience it isn't, but let's get some of this together for.
I think the timeline is important, but but I would like to know if there's any quantitative data to suggest like, hey, this is what this should do when we have a roundabout here or when we do this with the sidewalks, what we anticipate, you know? And and we have, it'd be interesting, I mean, to know also, we've got two new rotor roundabouts in the past, however, many five years. And uh, is our traffic accidents reduced on those? I feel like they they work pretty well. But, you know, we have anecdotally people showing up and say, I think people are slingshotting out of those things. And I don't know if that's real or or, you know, how legit that is or if it, have accidents gone down?
Linda? Yeah, Sarah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, A, I like the idea of workshopping this. This seems like we have more to discuss. B, I like Clint's idea of proposing some timeline schedules of steps along the way. And then I guess, you know, see Mitch, I I have a question a bit on the contract. Is there a way for us to have access to see the data that the community has been sending in as counselors? So we have some idea what kind of comments are coming in? And also, is there any way that, I mean, some of the things that happened at that meeting were people saying, we don't like option A or B on your plans. We think there's this thing you completely neglected that's a big problem that could be solved in a totally different way. So is there any feedback that's going to come from SABEGO about out of this public meeting? We heard the following things that we needed to like, think about differently than we had and as we're moving forward? Or do they give us none of that feedback? We just a sort of a black box that they listen and they spit something back out and we don't know like what they actually heard at the meeting that they are now going back to consider addressing?
We can do some of that. The the only opportunity or or risk management statement for me, and I'm going to say this carefully. When they say what they heard, that doesn't mean that's all they've heard. They're going to tell you what they've heard and what the general consensus is from the input received. That does not mean they're ignoring. They may have heard somebody else say, yes, I want a driveway here. No, I don't want a driveway here.
Yeah.
Fifteen people said they want a driveway, one said no. They heard someone said no. What they're going to present back is the consensus of what we heard, meaning that there may have been people in opposition to this. But this is what we're trying to boil it down to get you to a concept of the majority participating. And I just wouldn't want anybody in the community to feel slighted that, oh, you didn't hear me. I said, don't do that. But that's, you know, the general understanding that was we do this.
There was some definitely some clear, like the the roundabout here, you know, the fire station was one where there's a lot of
Okay.
Strong feedback, you know, I mean, there're going to be some of those out, you know.
Summarize the pros and the.
Yeah. Do we're going to the turn, right turn only out of Pine Street and what it does to, what's the name of that big hill over here by the church, Leo, you know it.
I meant the clear themes, like not every detail, but the biggest themes that they heard that they're going to figure out how to address in this next round of plans. And I think it'd be nice to hear those before the next round of plan comes back in case we listen to that and go, yeah, those two were true. But there was another one that just as many people said that isn't getting addressed. Personally, I think it'd be nice to hear that back from them and make sure it makes sense with what we all heard before the next, they they spend the next amount of time. But that's me. I think if there's something missed, it's better to catch it now before they go back and work on the next set of plans.
Yeah, I don't think, obviously, you can't run every question to ground to to the comment earlier, but there are some pretty significant themes and and pretty real concerns that were expressed, so.
Yeah, I'll work on the timeline and work with the chair and the vice chair on when we can schedule it.
Can you, who's, whose contract is this with SABEGO? Is it the state contract? Is it our contract?
It's a contract with us, um, and the state is engaged in that contract as well. But the contract is with us and we pay half, the state pays half. So it's a, it's a planning partnership initiative that then turns into the village partnership initiative.
And do you know off the top what what this first piece went for, what what we paid in this first piece?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to look it up. I got a guess and in the top of my head, I thought I read it, but I'm not positive because I've read so much information since joining you and I'd like to confirm it before, is that it?
All right. So unless we got other people waiting for us too, so um, unless we got.
I have one question, Clint. Is it, are you projecting this timeline to be put like online so that? Because I've had community members ask this specifically, what's the timeline? And so I think this is really important. And I just was wondering what you were envisioning it being, is there something just for us, council?
Yes, yes. Everything ends up online on that site that's dedicated to it and.
Yeah, definitely.
Great.
And you could just make it a living document. Great, thanks. And you can just make it a living document, great, thanks.
Alright, alright, we're gonna move on, I apologize, Megan, we should. Done this earlier, we should have just pulled you up, so. Update of the pool?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, one up. Again, not really a Q and A, we're still in the learning stages, I told Megan I'd share a little bit, but she's got some update, but it's not.
For people watching.
I'm Megan Mazzella, the Parks and Rec Director. Um, so as folks know, we had to close the pool. Um, the reason why is that the liner was separating from the wall. Um, which made it unsafe to enter the pool. We also don't want to damage our brand new liner in any way, that's still under warranty. So. The. Problem identified was not with the liner itself, but there is some sort of water pressure coming from behind the liner. Just pushing it away from the wall. We have been in contact with both sets of contractors for the gutter and the liner, so both are aware. Both have been very communicative. Um, the gutter, right, water pressure gutter, that's how that system works. That person from that contract was out here today with us, I spent most of the day at the pool with that gentleman. Um, trying to troubleshoot any possible issues, any possible things we can eliminate before we. Open up that brand new gutter we have. So there has been some existing infrastructure in the pool. The theory is that maybe it wasn't sealed off. Um, in the right ways or something broke through the winter, so we are taking steps this week to eliminate that. Possibility, so we can test the gutters more thoroughly and make. Make the best decision moving forward before we undo something unnecessarily, is the kind of the easier route there without damaging. Been brand new infrastructure, the brand new stuff we do have.
I feel like, um. You've been, the staff have been and you've been really responsive to the consistent incredibly complicated. Piece of equipment, you know, facility, you know, it's underground, it freezes, it's older. And we really leaned into getting it open for the summer. Uh, when we learned in in March that it was, you know, there was another issue and we appropriated some more funds. Perhaps the more orderly and thing for us to do would be, well, let's just. Take a pass the twenty twenty four season and not do it, and I I feel like. I wanna own and say, I guess publicly, at least for me, that. We put pressure on staff to get this thing open as fast as possible, and I think that creates. The extent that that creates any additional operational challenges in terms of managing a project. I just wanna say, I wanted to say that. I'm glad we tried to get it open as fast as we could. Um, and. So I just, I just wanted to say that and I appreciate it, some people will be like, well. It's 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 a it's a challenge, well, we're trying to do the best thing we can by the people who are now.
So thank you, I I appreciate that from council, and I think at the same time. Yes, we were moving quickly in some aspects, but we weren't moving. Too fast to the point where we were missing things. Some folks were were thinking, well, the pump room was on, I have to run chemicals, typically, that was something that was asked, it's like, well, why wasn't it run for weeks and weeks on end? Um, in May, when we typically go through our opening, we do, we do run it for a week at a time and. In the morning, I'll go and check stuff, I was to the point where I was timing the cycles to test the water as soon as I could. So there was a lot of effort, I know Public Works is out there, um, and it was hot, that hot, hot week we had, they were out there every day. We were all putting in our best effort, but it wasn't something we missed, it was just something. That unfortunately with a project this big. Could happen, and that was when it was possible to catch something like that, was during. During uh, that close to openings.
Yeah, in May, if you if we regular year, you would have caught it in May, nobody would know the difference, right, or probably or, you know.
So do you think?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, thank you, Megan, I appreciate it, and you know, these. That pool is incredibly complex and complicated, and I hope. That um, all of the um. Community who's listening here will realize that um, there's just things that are out of. Our control and you have done like hero's job to get that open and I appreciate it. Um, extensively, and um, it it will, it will be open at some point. Um, and and I just wanna thank you for everything that you've done for for all of us.
So we're not gonna put any kind of dates or times or thinking?
I think the only thing that we have right now is we might have enough information by the end of this week. That a formal update can be shared, community wide, council community, et cetera, that would be the goal, hopefully we get it, but.
Yeah, the, like I said, we we think we've identified the problem, we have to eliminate some of those options to. So much of it's underground, so much of it's a little bit um, unknown, it's a little bit of trial and error to make sure we get it right, so we're eliminating those. Those easier steps now, uh, hopefully solving it and then moving forward from there, but.
Do we have any passes that have to be kind of re?
Yep, so a- any any passes, we. Did open swim lessons, we did open passes, anything like that can be refunded. Uh, I'll I'll need a little time to work through those refunds, of course, but everyone can be refunded at full. Um, I believe all the passes this year, just with how opening worked are all online, people purchased all online, so it makes. Uh, refunds a little bit faster in that sense too, where I can flip through the. The site, I just need some time to get that sorted.
Is there any thing that has been done or can be done for the lifeguards that you hired, who were expecting work this summer?
We're coming up with a solution, it's just, we wanna know the date, if it's gonna be a no open at all for the year, obviously, it's a different solution than if it's just. Temporary, but we've got a couple of short term measures that we've done to keep people busy.
Okay, that's that's good.
And I will say it probably, are we good with the pool, because I'm just one parting comment. Again, notice you not need to get into a discussion, but she's also been dealing with some good news for her coworker. Owen, who has accepted it, right, Sean, Sean, that's right, his last name is Owen. Got it, Sean, I met him a few times, accepted a new position, so we're excited for him. Um, so we're gonna have another position to fill and that's something else that's working in the rec department right now, but we're excited to share that as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And thank you, Public Works for Phil, I mean. Cement in the thing in the middle of the hot, hot times and.
Unintentional.
Yes, so I don't know, that was upon, I didn't even know I hit that one.
Oh, cement, public work.
Alright. Get us a fire chief for God's sake.
The next, the uh, so the fire chief update, uh, first review was complete. We've done some initial scoring and we're beginning to set up the first round of interviews. So there is a little bit of a timeline, we're hopeful that this can move quickly through the month of August so that an offer is. Um, out by the end of the month. Um, of August and with an acceptance and a start date in hand.
End of the month of August. August.
End of the month of August, have an offer out, accepted with an official start date, that would be my goal. Yep, but again, depending on how the interview process goes, multiple rounds. Um, I'll keep you posted, but we are beginning to set up the first stages.
Excellent.
And background checks and everything else, yeah. Uh, private drive tier two trash collection. Uh, now, so the letter's gonna go out, it's the contract the town signed about a year ago, I met with. Megan Hess. And and they went over this with me, so there were questions from citizens that came forward about whether there was actually recycling occurring. Was the understanding it was, we went back and looked, the letter said that there was recycling on some of these tier two roads, which are out um, near the lake. Um, they're ones that they can't access with all the equipment they needed, so they set up a different collection mechanism. They are unable to do recycle collection there, so they are not getting that service. Letters are going out to all impacted citizens that they don't have residential service for recycling. And we're looking at the alternatives with them, but right now that is the answer, there is no capacity to do recycling. With the zero sort unless we set up some different mechanism, which is a collection site, which would have a different type of. Design, so we're kind of looking at what the options may be, but I wanted to announce the council that letters are going out to people that live in these areas. So they're all told clearly they do not get recycling there, if you at their at the doorstop, they can still bring recycling to the other locations. And we're looking at other alternatives besides that, but that is the current. They'd have to take it to the uh, transfer station.
Can you forward us a copy of that letter?
Oh, yes, send the letter.
And is this new, oh, like, was this always part of the plan with that tier two?
Yeah, yeah, we briefly on it last summer when we, they weren't able to get the trucks down.
Why we had a tier two?
Yes, it was part of it, it's just the general understanding was that they thought that was coming later, not initially. So initial contacts with all community members were, this is how you're recycling and trash would work. It's not accurate for the people that lived in tier two zones, so we've updated it with a newsletter. Gould Landing, I'll just make it share this morning, it's not on there, they did have to pull the dock out to back in.
Pulled out right now and it's over, it's sorry, just being repaired.
Yeah, got damaged. And it's being handled by Public Works, so it is out temporarily. That's everything.
Everything from you? And I did share, I will share for town. Here updates, I shared, we got a. A letter from the um. Human, I shared with council a while ago, um, the Human Rights Campaign sent us a letter in July. About their survey and Orno is one of the eight or nine. Main communities they survey. Uh, it looks like one of those things where it's like a, you know, you've gotta do work to do well in the survey, so I forwarded it to Mitch and Clint. Against this afternoon and they're gonna take a look at it to see whether. The deadline for that is Friday, August ninth, if we are to participate in this, they're gonna score us whether we participate or not. And. I'm also cognizant of how much, how many must do's are on, it seems like a nice thing to do to do well in the survey if we. But and there's a lot of must do's on on Clinton, which is. Uh, list of things to do.
Is that like a political action committee basically?
I think it's it's what it's, it's, I don't think it's a political action, it's not like the Sportsman's Alliance of Maine survey that, you know. Where they survey you on um. Firearms and hunting safety, hunting, you know, stuff like that, but it is.
Seemed like a political organization, I wondered, I wondered about why, if that's something that we do both time too.
Yeah, so I I don't think it's as. High, high priority, but I just wanted to. It was a piece of communication that came into me as a chair, I just wanted to update the council, but. It's being looked at by staff. And. Anything else under chair or manager reports, okay, future agenda items, the items of concern?
What are comments for us uh, in person?
Yeah, we're getting public comments here.
For this section of the meeting, uh.
Yeah, give us one second, we'll come right to you, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, probably should ask for public comment at the start, just to. Future agenda items, items of concern. I I wanted to bring up at some point, I'd be good for us to get um. A discussion, probably Matt on your committee, the um, the Orno Arts Fest. And kind of how that, what the learnings were from that. I thought MJ did a fantastic job in the time that she had, and I thought there was a lot of great venues, a lot of great uh, acts. And opportunities, um, but I'm eager to hear from MJ, bring MJ in and hear directly from her and what her thoughts are, I I assume other people would wanna hear from her as well.
Alright, I'll contact her and we'll um, set up a date, thanks.
Yep, okay. Next up. On anybody else have any future agenda items or items of concern? Where Sarah and I meet with Clint on Monday morning, the Monday when we don't have a council meeting, we meet with Clint that Monday morning, so if you've got something you wanna get to us. That's a good time, and of course, everyone can add items to the agenda as a as a counselor. Next up is public comment, you know, the Orno Town Council welcomes feedback. Um, we just ask people to be careful not to address. Um, employees of the town directly by name, you're certainly free to talk about departments and things that we do, you can talk about counselors. But is there anyone in public comment? Sir, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Michael Lang, um, thank you for for everything that's done on behalf of Orno. Um, my comment uh, concerns uh, uh, the Route Two plan, but it's adjacent to this, it's not really about the Route Two plan itself. Um, and I am concerned, and I have been concerned throughout. That there was no attention paid in the question of Route Two, to the impact it would have on College Avenue. Which is the other major artery of our town, and according to the previous. Uh, Chief of Police told me that there were over ten thousand vehicle uh. Movements per day on that, and I presumably during the school, the University of Maine school year. So we're talking about ten thousand crossings of vehicles on this street. Um. And so my my concern from the start of the Route Two discussion was how. This plan, which I am so happy is in being discussed, will impact College Avenue. This is especially concerning to me, given the changes that are occurring on the Stillwater College Avenue intersection. Where I imagine things are gonna be moving faster onto College Avenue, and so cars that come off of the highway onto. Uh, from Stillwater then onto College. Uh, go way too fast, the street is a disaster. Uh, in many ways, there is constant excess speed, I mean, it's constant that cars go way past the speed limit. Cars do not generally do not stop for pedestrians, including my child, including when he was quite young. Uh, when crossing this street. Um, now, it's true, as we've already heard today, that paint fades quickly. Uh, uh, and that's a concern, and I've called Public Works over the years, and they've done the fantastic job they do to come out and take care of that. Um, but there are also signs in fluorescent green which indicate that this space is a crosswalk. There is myself or my child or other pedestrians who stand in the street. Waiting for cars to stop. They do not. In fact, during the the university school year, there will be a stream of cars that are commuting to campus. I will stand there because I walk to my job every day and I cross college every day. I will stand there and point my finger at the green sign that signals this is pedestrian crossing. And a stream of ten to fifteen cars will just go right past me. At the meeting on Wednesday, um, someone mentioned the use of ballards on Route Two and. So Route Two, that's another discussion, but Jared, I think his name was Jared from M A D O T said. This is an excellent idea for College Avenue. He said, this is a perfect candidate for ballards. And I don't wanna take time explaining this, this should be obvious, but, you know, narrowing the road, uh, creating safety for bicyclists, et et cetera. Um, so I'm here today to request that ballards, which would be. Relatively inexpensive compared to the changes we're talking about for College Avenue. Be used during the non-snow season on College Avenue. So I'm 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 requesting that this be be lo- looked at and and hopefully accomplished. And I'm also offering myself to do whatever is necessary to make this happen. Because uh, College Avenue is a is a safety disaster. And it's amazing that uh, it hasn't been worse in terms of whatever history there has been with accidents and and problems there. Um, so thank you, and I hope that uh, we can make that street much slower and safer for those of us who live on it.
Any other? Anyone online, Mitch?
Just a quick going on that, I think uh, the Orno stops is should be hopefully directly related to your primary.
I'm very appreciative to hear that today. You know, I can tell you that when the Orno police are on college. Everyone's the same. Um, and sometimes it's a little, you know, little setback of the vehicle, the police vehicle, and so that, you know, generates, that generates that enforcement. But. It's. You know, it it, when the cars, the police are not there, however, it's something quite different, hopefully, this will alleviate some of the problems. But the thing about ballards is that it would, it would enhance bicycle use, which after all is on. The sign of Orno, the town sign has bicyclists on it. Bicyclists are constantly on that street, there's plenty of room for it, the street is way too wide. And so ballards would be an easy solution to this in addition to the enhancement of enforcement and this uh, campaign, which I'm so happy to hear about.
I, yeah, I think we should, um. Michael, I think as we go do this work, we should. And with the Orno stops and the infrastructure, and I mean, you've seen the work that we're doing on Forest Avenue and and things like that, I I think we need to. Wrap that up and and have College Ave, particularly. Yeah, if if people get in their mind that College Ave is somehow faster because. You know, the other routes are being getting more attention or something like that, that's not nobody's interest, so I think we've gotta be mindful of that. But. We'll take you up, we'll think about ways we can take you up on your offer to help too, because I think it will be. Great, um, I think that's. That was, I think we're up for adjournment, unless there's any more public comment? Great, thank you, everybody, thank you.